Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this November 2nd regular meeting of the Zion City Council to order. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner McDowell?
Here.
Commissioner Holmes?
Here.
Commissioner Fireson?
Here.
Mayor McKinney?
Here. Item number three, Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Bremer, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(inaudible) allegiance to a flag. (inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Bremer. We're going to have Pastor Corwin Wong from First Baptist Church from Winter Harbor is going to offer a prayer for us tonight. He recently moved here, has been here about six months. Welcome to the area.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. Came a long way from California six months ago, so.
A long time to cheer.
Yeah. Talk to us in a couple of months.
Yeah, it is going to be a long few months. With your permission, I'd like to read just a few verses from Romans, Chapter 13, for our prayer. It says, "Let every person be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God; and those that exist have been instituted by God. Therefore whoever resists the authorities, resists what God has appointed; and those who resist will endure judgment. For rulers are not a terror to good conduct, but to bad. Would ye have no fear of the one who is in authority, then do what is good, and ye will receive his approval." Let me pray for us. Lord of heaven and earth, you've placed each and every person in a gear and illusion position by your sovereignty, by your sovereign love. No one is in a place of power except by what you ordained them to be. So I pray that you guide them with your wisdom, and may they act with the proper fear of As Ecclesiastes says, "You will bring every deed into judgment, good and evil." You are the ultimate judge, Lord. And I pray that you guide these people in the very difficult positions that they're in, sometimes impossible positions. So may your wisdom fill their minds and fill their hearts with the proper fear of the Lord in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Wong. What was that chapter in Romans?
Romans, Chapter 13, Verses 27.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, Agenda Changes. Are there any agenda changes? If not, is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented? So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number five is Citizens Comments. W.C. Bremer?
Mayor McKinney, gentlelady, honor of service. First, I have two items that I would present to you. Do I get an extra three minutes for that? I do. I get two minutes extra for being a senior citizen. One minute for military retired. Something for being tall, rugged, good-looking, and incredibly modest.
Yes, three minutes.
First item, Mayor McKinney, a great and gentlelady and honorable service. I bring to your attention the Saturday, October 30th copy of the journal star from the city of Peoria, which lists a number of high school nicknames, including the Cobden, Appleknockers, DeKalb, Bards, and so on. And it mentions the Zion Benton Zeeby's business article. May I have permission to approach, sir?
Permission granted. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Second, I would recall to your attention, as I do every year about this time, that next Wednesday, the 10th of November, will be the 2046th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. I respectfully call upon you to send the appropriate birthday greetings and felicitations to the Commandant of the Marine Corps, Headquarters Marine Corps, 8th and High Street, Washington, DC, and the local zip code he is. And I would also request that the, I forgot to mention it last month, that the Zion Township Board members contact the Zion Township Supervisor and send similar greetings to the Commandant. I thank you for your courtesy, your attention, and I request permission to stand down, sir.
Permission granted. Thank you, Mr. Bremer. Again, with comments for those that first might be making citizens comments for the first time here, they're restricted to three minutes. At the time of your comments, if there isn't a response given, there will be some follow-up by someone from the City Council or one of our department heads. Mrs. Lewis?
Hi, my name is Sharon Lewis. I live in Zion. I have a complaint. My daughter was pulled over today, and it's starting to become bad to me. Children are feeling African-American children. I feel harassed. This is not the first time. The same officer has pulled over another of my children. It got to the point where I stayed out there for 25 minutes today and reported. He said before my daughter went to the tent, the tent went from dogs searching her car to two officers searching her car, to when my daughter told him that she didn't want to get out the car, they forced her out the car and told her if she didn't, she was going to be arrested. So, this officer, Mr. Bush, I filed a complaint already. It needs to be looked into. I want to know how many of our African-American children have been pulled over by the same officer? Because I know for a fact I have seen him pull over, over a dozen of them. That's my complaint.
Okay. We have our, our police chief is here, and one of our lieutenants is here. And you can, if you stay around to the end of City Council meeting, they'd be happy to talk to you, along with our Commissioner of Public Safety, Commissioner Fireson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Raymond Gilmore?
(inaudible) we'll take them on and off of a picnic table. You know, we'll take them off. Okay, entrance to our, entrance to our subdivision is used for our tunneling from construction trucks, traffic, or stuff like this. And it's been messed up. And so I'm requesting that we get a resurface and we should charge a tally board because during that construction, a lot of the constructions were came in there and turned around. One time a Coca-Cola truck came in there, semi, came in there, turned around, you know. So messing it up real bad. When I first moved in there, three and a half years ago, there was a big hole there anyway. So, you know, so, I think it's about time, that's done. And the, I already talked about the manhole, sinkhole, manhole, pipe hole, and there's a manhole in the, in the grass there. Already discussed this.
Director of Public Works, Ray Rockland.
Right, right. And, I want to revisit that thing about the childproof gate, self-locking, self-closing, you know, gate. Don't have any, don't need a fence, self-locking, self-locking, self-closing gate. Better way to keep the four-legged animals inside. So when a senior old lady be out walking, she won't get chased down three times. Three times, won't get chased down. That dog. Okay?
Okay, I've got one question. What is the, you keep talking, you've talked about this today, about the gate?
Gate.
What, what gate are we talking?
You have gate on your fence, you have gate in your yard.
Yes.
You know, you got a gate coming in and out.
Yeah.
If you have a gate around your pool, a fence around your pool, you have to have a gate, right?
Was this on somebody's private property?
Yeah, on your property.
Yeah.
You have a gate on your property.
Right.
Fence on your property. But you should have a gate that's self-locking, self-closing, so stuff won't get out.
Man, I, I think the question is, where are you looking for this gate to be placed? The gate that you're referencing? Where, where do you want that self-locking, self-closing gate to be placed?
Well, it's in the maintenance of a meeting, have to go way back to the 08.
Okay.
When, when one of our neighbors, the neighbor was approached by the dog.
Okay. So are you looking for a recommendation for?
Yeah.
The neighbor?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Self-locking, self-closing gate. You know.
Yep. Okay, all right. Thank you. Item number six, Consent Agenda.
(inaudible) minutes for a regular meeting held on April 9th, 2021 at 7:00 PM.
Is there approval, a motion to accept the minutes? So moved.
Second.
Motion by Fireson, second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries.
Bills, vouchers 138978 through 139080 drawn on Franklin International Bank, total $692,336.60.
Is there a motion for the approval of bills?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fisher?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number seven, Consider Passing Ordinance as Follows, 7A, Regarding the Disposition of Surplus Property, a 2010 Ford Explorer per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, good evening. I've got a few items, so I'll try to keep these quick. I respectfully request the following vehicle to be cleared as surplus property and approved to be auctioned through Clinton Auto Auction. It's a white 2010 Ford Explorer with the VIN number of, as you can see on your packet, we'll label that. This, this vehicle is a Ford Explorer used in the control and in support of the CSO capacity. Vehicle has a high mileage and will require extensive repairs to remain serviceable. Due to the diminished value and high costs to repair, staff recommends that because this vehicle has reached its serviceable life, it should be sold at auction. Just an add-on there, that vehicle has 125,000 miles on it.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fireson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7B, Regarding the Disposition of Surplus Property, CEW per Chief Barton.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The list of conducted energy weapons below is recommended to be cleared as surplus and traded back to Axon Enterprises for a reduced purchase price on new CEW equipment. A full description of each CEW to include the main model server is listed below. These CEWs are property of the Police Department and assigned to officers on each ship. I respectfully request the City Council to put transfer these items back to Axon for the reduced cost of new equipment.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fireson?
Second.
Second by Holmes. Questions or comments?
Yes, I have a question, Chief. What's the, the lifespan of these conducted energy weapons? How long do they last?
It's, it's dependent upon the usage. We're getting a couple of years out of them right now. Also, as we have more of them, the, they're used less often, so to speak, but they do go out with each officer on every shift. So depending on how much they get beat up, or how much potential damage or drop, or whatever that may, that may happen to them, it could reduce their lifespan. We have been replacing them under a warranty period if they do, if they are damaged. The new service agreement will cover some of that and extend out that lifespan. What we're looking forward to, continue the use of these without having to repurchase.
Okay. So they're rechargeable, so there's a, a limit of lifespan on that battery? You know, is it going to get so many years out of it, or?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And we're also at the lifespan, the manufacturer, so to speak, is limiting, they're not making these anymore, they've moved on to a new version.
Okay.
So these are no longer serviceable. What we're, we're finding that these batteries aren't keeping a charge through the entirety of the shift, which is problematic as we know. Officer tries to use it, it doesn't work, and we now have the problem.
Okay. Thank you.
We're, motion is second. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7C, Approving and Authorizing a Certain Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Zion on behalf of the Zion Police Department and the Lake County Sheriff's Office per Chief Barton.
Again, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I respectfully request the approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Lake County Sheriff's Office and the City of Zion on behalf of the Zion Police Department. Is that the request of the Lake County Sheriff's Office to consolidate the use of body-borne cameras for officers assigned to the Lake County Special Investigations Group, or SIG Group, under law and rule. This will come at no cost to the City of Zion, and any and all requests for evidence gained will be handled by the Lake County Sheriff's Office. And the Lake County Sheriff's Office will be responsible for managing and maintaining the body-borne camera within state statutes.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the MOU.
Motion by Fireson?
Second.
Second by McDowell. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7D, Authorizing and Improving the Purchase of Body Cameras and Associated Equipment from Axon Enterprises, Inc., to be used by the Zion Police Department per Chief Barton.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, again. On July 6th of this year, the council approved the city budget. Within that budget was funding for the body-borne camera interview room camera technology. The Zion Police Department is currently under contract with Axon Enterprises for body-borne cameras. However, the initial agreement with Axon for body-borne cameras did not provide camera refresh during the fiber contract for the body two body-borne cameras. Staff recommends entering into a new fiber contract for new updated body three body-borne cameras. There are several benefits to this contract. The body three camera has GPS technology, gunshot detection, live streaming capability to allow supervisors to video feed remotely in real time. This new contract would cancel any and all contracts previously held with Axon. Additionally, the attached quote provides for a new interview room camera surveillance system. The system integrates seamlessly with other Axon technology, allowing all case evidence to be held in one singular program. Staff of research will recommend the continued use of Axon in both body-borne camera and interview room surveillance for ease of use with other agencies, as well as the Lake County Sheriff or Lake County State Attorney's Office.
Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Fireson, second by Fisher. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7E, Authorizing and Improving the Purchase of Tasers and Associated Equipment from Axon Enterprises, Inc., to be used by the Zion Police Department per Chief Barton.
All right, and I'm done after this one. So thank you for your time. Mayor and Commissioners, again, on July 6th of 2021, this council approved the city budget. Within that budget was funded for the less lethal weapon technology. Zion Police Department currently uses predominantly two-liter conducted energy weapons, CEWs, less lethal manufacturer, Axon Enterprises. This product is commonly known as the Taser. The Zion Police Department has used Axon, and with this council approval intends to continue to act, continue using Axon due to seamless integration with body-borne camera, evidence.com, drone technology, and virtual reality training services provided by Axon Enterprises. Additionally, the attached quote includes virtual reality training package. This package will allow for on-shift, real-world-like scenario training with various scenarios to learn from, allowing greater repetition for training with each of our, each of our officers. Staff respectfully request approval of the attached fiber agreement with Axon Enterprises to provide for conducted energy weapons, as well as virtual reality training.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Fireson, second by McDowell. Questions or comments? Well, since we just got rid of all of our tasers, we better get some. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 7F, Approving and Authorizing a Certain Revised Redevelopment Agreement between the City of Zion and Abbey Groups, Inc., or its designee per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, since the chief is allowing someone else to turn. So this is a redevelopment agreement with Abbey Groups, Inc., which is the developer for the Popeyes location at the Old Dunes Theater. We came to council prior for approval of agreement. Since then, the group, the developer, switched attorneys and basically looked at the contract. It didn't quite match up with the structure of how he was financing and looking to do the deal. So the delay of the state on getting the entrance approval and all that kind of allowed him to revisit this and make sure, he wanted to make sure he wasn't in violation of the contract by moving forward with how he was structuring it. So two primary changes on this was, one, in how the incentive, nothing changed as far as the incentive amount or the scope of the project, but how the, how he received the reimbursement. The, the original structure was he was going to be reimbursed through TIF increment from the project over time. That was the original wording. However, the life of that TIF does not really allow, that, there's only about a year, year and a half left on that TIF. Also, he was looking at it to be more of like a construction loan draw as eligible expenses were incurred to get reimbursement. So this structure that then sent him more of like an escrow agreement that he can draw on, which, which, you know, staff and attorneys are fine with. The other piece was that his equity, the way it was written, and it's kind of a default language, but his equity had to come from him. We didn't allow financing of the project or the property, but he's looking to get his equity through his share of it, through like a construction loan. And the way the, the language was originally written did not allow for that, so that had changed in here as well. And then there was just some cleanup language on party names and things like that, but the overall structure of the deal and the scope of the project, like I said, is unchanged. So we just thought, rather than do an amendment and address all the little individual changes, we would re-present as presented here, and staff would recommend approval of the redevelopment agreement as presented.
Is there a motion to approve this redevelopment agreement?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions or comments? So this Popeyes is actually going to happen?
That is our hope.
Yeah. A, a lot of people during this process have wondered if it's something that the city had done, and we've been ready and willing to get this project done, but as Administrator Nabel mentioned, a change of attorneys, a new look at things, and it's delayed the process quite a bit, but everybody is anxiously waiting for Popeyes to get here.
The first in line.
Yeah. If you can beat me there.
I'll be right behind you.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8, Discussion, Authorization, Approval, 8A, Tabulation of Bids, Key Card and FOB Installation Bid per Director Ionsen.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The city received two bids. One was responsible for installation of key card and fob system for all city employees. Bidder SMS system each, base bid $52,428 on spend, alternate bid amount was $3,231.60. Dad, granddad giving the owner responsible bidder as an assistant team with a base bid of $52,428 on spend. Fund for this project is included with FY 2022 capital budget.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Holmes, and second by McDowell. Questions or comments?
How long was this bid period open?
I didn't agree with that.
How long was the bid period open?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen days? Okay.
Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 8B, Consider Approval of Proposal from Christopher Burke Engineering for Professional Engineering Services for STP Grant for Galilee per Director Roberts.
Thank you, Mayor. Lake County Council Mayor is announced to call for work for the FY 2020, or 2022 through 2026 STP shared fund program. This program provides federal funding at 80% of the construction engineering and construction cost. Proposed project is the resurfacing of Galilee Avenue from 21st Street to 33rd Street. Estimated project cost would be $1,799,155. Potential federal funding is estimated at $1,386,924, which would lead to a shared city's estimate cost of $403,231. Staff is requesting approval of the proposal for design engineering and project application submitted from Christopher Burke Engineering in the amount of $56,500.
Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
So moved by McDowell, second by Fisher. Questions or comments? Galilee's going to look spanking new next year.
(inaudible).
So, just a quick question for Director Roberts. So this is just putting in for the funding?
Yes, sir.
So?
This is an application for the, well, you have to have the design done.
Right.
And then the application applied, and then they will load on it through CMAP and Lake County Marathon.
So the hope is, is that we'll get this into?
Within that time period.
Yeah, within the next year. So.
Any additional questions?
No, I think that's it for me.
All right. Thank you. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner McDowell?
Aye.
Commissioner Holmes?
Aye.
Commissioner Fireson?
Aye.
Mayor McKinney?
Aye. Motion carries. Item 8C, Consider Approval of Waiver of Sprinkler System, 2250 Sheridan Road per Chief Street.
I can address that on behalf of?
Chief Street, who is the invisible man for Halloween, will go through.
Attorney DeSallely can actually call, because I don't need to.
All right.
So, thank you.
Jimmy DeSallely, City Attorney.
Sorry. Dear Mayor and City Council, I'm requesting an advisory vote of approval for waiving a sprinkler system requirement following a change of use inspection of 2250 Sheridan Road. This is in reference to Section 9.0, 903.62, 4.3 of the 2006 International Fire Code as amended by Section 34-43 of the City Code regarding sprinkler system requirements for the expansion interior alterations in modeling of occupancies. Rule 23 states a project that, I'm sorry, entails a change in use group for any part 4.3 states a project that, I'm sorry, entails a change in the use group for any part of the building would kick in the sprinkler system requirement. Background information, this is a former tax preparation office which has been proposed to change into a daytime COVID-19 testing site. The occupancy does, does have an alarm system, will not operate overnight, and is up to current fire code requirements otherwise. I believe it is unreasonable to require a sprinkler system addition given the small size of the workplace in comparison to the rest of the strip law and the proposed use of occupancy. I also wish to point out that it is not my intention that this opinion or vote become essential in nature. This is based on the merits of the specific situation itself only. Respect, policeman, Justin Streep, Zion, fire, fire arrest. Sorry, everyone, I, my eyes are not at giving things.
Don't be too proud. Get a pair of readers, huh?
Right, right. I apologize, thank you. I mean, I did look at that, Mayor, and I, uh, I agree with the, the chief. It's, it's well within legal rights for us to vote on this advisory.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fryerson, second by Fisher?
No, by McDowell.
By McDowell, excuse me, thank you.
You're welcome.
Questions or comments? Uh, clerk, please call the roll.
Fisher Fisher?
Aye.
Fisher McDowell?
Aye.
Fisher Holmes?
Aye.
Fisher Fryson?
Aye.
Mayor McCain.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 8D, consider approval of general liability, law enforcement liability, auto and equipment insurance, and excess umbrella insurance policy effective 12/121 to 12/122 per Administrator Nabel.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Our brokers, Assurance Limited, went out to market for our, our insurance renewal that's set to expire at the end of this month. This renewal, as, as mentioned, covers our general liability, law enforcement liability, auto and equipment, and excess umbrella, uh, policy. The total renewal is up three and a half percent from prior year or about $11,000 annually. Um, after reviewing the information that returned, is the recommendation of assurance and staff to renew, uh, the, the lives of the insurance as presented in the proposal.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to, uh, accept this proposal and renew the policy.
Motion by Fisher, second by Holmes. Questions, comments? Clerk, please call the roll.
Fisher Fisher?
Aye.
Fisher McDowell?
Aye.
Fisher Holmes?
Aye.
Fisher Fryson?
Aye.
Mayor McCain.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, departmental commentary. Director Ianson?
Thank you, um, just a quick update on the Galilee demo shoot. It's on the night of the 7th of April. The process of final grading and removing the major, like asphalt and so on. Could you come through?
Looking much better than it did, that's for certain. Director Roberts?
Thank you, sir. The 2020 road program, uh, paying the dollar and has completed that. That was the project that had, uh, proficiency within the asphalt. It's, um, been 100% complete now.
All right, thank you. Director Roberts? Administrator Nabel?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if you've been at prior meetings, you know what I'm going to say. But, um, we have reimplemented water shut-offs for accounts that are delinquent. Uh, we put a stay on shut-offs during the eviction moratorium and during COVID for the past 18 months. Unfortunately, a lot of individuals, um, either whether by means or just taking advantage of the, the stay on, on those bills, became eligible for shut-off. We reimplemented shut-offs back with the, back in early October was the first round, the first section. Um, everyone who was eligible received notification multiple times over the past year. Um, but the next round is coming up. Um, I believe it's starting, looking at you, next week, probably. We'll see. But people have been notified when they're, when, when they're eligible for shut-off. Um, in October, we had over 700 accounts that were originally eligible for shut-off. Um, we've been working closely with the township, um, to provide outreach and try and make sure people's water is, does stay on or gets restored as soon as possible. So if you need assistance with your bill, please reach out to the township. They're working closely with city staff, um, especially as we go into colder season here. Um, we don't want people without water. We don't want pipes to burst, that becomes a risk. Um, so staff is ready to stand by and try and help us whenever possible, but you've got to reach out to make that happen. So, um, please do that. The next, obviously, the next round, the third section, will be happening in early December. Um, so try and get in as soon as you can if you're eligible now, but make sure to get in before December, before it's too late to try and get that assistance.
Yeah, township is working with people closely, along with the city, and also 211, the United Way. If you need, uh, rental assistance, they still, if you call them, they'll provide help with a lot of different services. Chief Barton?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. Director Roberts has been working hard and getting our roads repaved and worked on. I'll just remind everybody that speed limits are still at 3 miles a hour. Officers are going to be issuing citations on those. As you may know, we have a speed trailer out there, um, giving warnings to visually to, to those motors, so please abide by those speed limits. Um, and you will see follow-up enforcement from there. Also wanted just to highlight that Shop On Top this year is moving forward. We will be doing that, uh, again this year at Walmart.